First up tonight, we have approval of the agenda. If there are no needs for any amendments, I'll seek permission of approval.
Aye.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Next, we have our minutes for the special call joint meeting on the nineteenth, or special call meeting on the twenty-fourth. Our regularly scheduled meeting on the first, our work session on the first. If there are no needs for amendments to those minutes, I'll seek a motion for approval of all three, or all four.
Seven.
And second? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Moving on now to administrative reports. Enjoy the wonderful Star Wars show on the third, and sure we all have to report tonight. Any other?
Yeah, I think we need to congratulate Cal Rawland on winning the home run derby. It's from Halloween and like, it's Smokey Mountain Middle School. And he's playing in the All-Stars tonight in the MLB in Atlanta.
Thank you. Any other questions this evening? Time to move to Camerons King.
So, one of the projects we've been working on is the Center for Domestic Peace. And that particular project was scheduled to be completed by the end of this month, as this report says. But there's been some, some issues with getting some materials and, and the subs. So we're gonna have to, will be delayed until probably end of August. First part of September, we've got a meeting tomorrow with the contractor to kind of go over the schedule that was presented today. And we'll kind of be going, going from there. I have been meeting on all of these projects literally every week. So we're, you know, a lot of them have, especially the school ones, they're kind of wrapping up. We've not been talking about the Smokey Mountain Middle School at all yet. We've been focusing on the Fairview Elementary, which is very close to being, the design phases been complete. And then also the bus garage. This programming is still being done at Blue Ridge. It is a little bit more in-depth and a little bit more challenging shots. And we're kind of working through a lot of those different issues. The administration building, we're taking these three. The Justice Center, it'll be Justice Center, Detention, and then Administration also be three in, in this one project, on the final one. And so right now, the Administration Building is very close to being, the set being completed. And it will work through that process to get a February LGC date, hopefully. And then the other two, the Detention Center co-architecture has been with us. And we're gonna have a kickoff for that one next week as well. Try to work out the details and come, come up with a budget, so. And then they, of course, that Justice Center is the last piece of that. The fairgrounds, I think I mentioned this before, but I'll mention it again. We are very close to starting up the building. We've got, the footings are very close to being complete. And we are, of course, working with, gonna be working with that builder to get that building done, hopefully. Hopefully by the end of this year, we'll have it completely done. And then I will be working on the water system, which is the major part. And that'll be, hopefully the grand open will be in the spring of 2026, so. And if, unless you have specific questions.
Who's the builder on that? Who's the builder on that?
It's Maverick Steel Billings out of, out of Blair, or no Commerce, Georgia.
Commerce, yeah.
Yeah.
With the middle school, you know, with our requirement to shovel and ground thirteen fifty-two minutes? We're gonna try to do that.
At, at this point, we are. That timeline, you know, that's, it's kind of subjective as far as what exactly you have to show the state. So a lot of school systems, or a lot of systems have done, like I said, a patrol plan, and that constitutes shovel activity. So I hope by September of 2026 that we actually have that. It, it's, you know, going through the process, we've still not, we're finalizing the topo map. We've got BLE contracted to go out and do the soil borers. And then, you know, the placement of the building, you know, kind of at all. And this is all happening before we actually have purchased the properties here. We have to, we're scheduled, I think, next month for closing on, on the property itself. So trying to get all that done before we can get a good, good estimate. But like I say, everything takes time. And then working with our neighbors to do maybe some, some leveling of the site, you know, with the property next to us. So we're working all of those angles at the same time, so.
The Center for Domestic Peace, are they gonna miss their original deadline? Did we put any penalties in place?
Yeah. Yeah, and, and we are looking currently into the contract to see, you know, for any liquidated damages that we're gonna assess. You know, based on their, their lack of being activity. And so we'll, we'll kind of go from there and let you know at the next meeting if, if that needs to take place.
Thank you. Questions for the board? First up tonight, we have Becky Abel. Ms. Abel?
Hello, happy Tuesday. Who's the person that is taking the lead on figuring out the budget for our withdrawal from the library?
That would be Mr. King.
Mr. King, oh, okay, good. How far are we along on that?
We're, we're, we're not set up to answer questions during public comment.
Okay. Well, my public comment is that I think you need to get on that because theoretically, and probably in reality, that's gonna cost all our taxpayers a lot more money. Even if we try to run it ourselves, even at lower amount of service. So I would really like to see, you know, what we can do to find out how much per capita it's gonna be for property owners to pay for this decision, which I think is faulty. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dick Darnell. Mr. Darnell?
Hi, y'all. A couple of things this time around. Subject fluoride. As you all know, JFK Junior, what have you, he's on the subject of fluoride. My aunt, Aunt Ruth, was a close friend of Ronald Reagan way back in the late fifties, early sixties. She was a personal consultant on communism. But she also was on the subject of fluoride back then. And how it was, how it affected brain cells and several other things. So we probably have it in our water system, I don't know. I'm just asking for y'all to explore the subject matter and to see if that's a chippy work that we eliminate fluoride in the water systems around here, per se. And the second thing is to think ahead, if not presently, about, I always appreciated how Randy Dillard is a cornerstone foundation, what have you, for our EMT fire. Everything for the county. And principally the South Side, but the county. So I think, I think down the road to start banking up, envisioning ways to honor his legacy, even though he's still very much with us and still very much out on the front line, dealing with matters for statute, park, roads, whatever, to honor him. In several ways, because he's, he's just done so much. And I was here when the boat came through to start paying up on the fire, the fire boys. And this is after years of developing the whole thing. Those are my two principal things for this three-minute exercise. And again, I ask you, I don't know if you've done phone calls to ask the DOT or whatever to scrape Indian Mountain Road. Just scrape it, just do a scrape, it's no big deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bogartis, Susan Bogartis?
My name is Susan Bogartis, and I live in Culloway, North Carolina. I have been here for eighteen years, and I've used the library quite a bit. I'm interested in how the services are gonna be maintained, especially the IT services. We have IT help with our new phones and our new computers. We have people who come in every week and help us. Maybe none of you really need that, but I need it a lot sometimes when I get a new device and I don't even know how to put my name in. And they help us with that. They're available every week, which is amazing. I mean, I don't, I would really, really miss that if those people weren't there. And I would not be the only one, because people walked in there all the time and they're like, how do I get the phone out of the box? And you're like, okay, well, I do know how to get out of the box. I'm really interested in, I mean, I've used the computer room and the wifi and scanning. I use all that stuff probably weekly now. I think that it's because I don't have internet at my house. You don't have internet at my house, and so I use internet at the hospital or at the library. And that library is really helpful. They really helped me to figure out like, okay, you just knocked onto the right site. You know, that's what, that's your problem. You didn't get the right site, you didn't get the right information. Like, okay, well, where is that site? And they helped me with that. I'd like to guarantee that we're gonna have the same services we have now when we have our independent library. I'm really concerned about that's not gonna happen, and it's gonna be much more expensive. I use it, like I said, every week. I mean it, just to be honest. And I, I could buy internet at my house, and it would cost me every day. I don't use it, I don't do streaming, I don't have a television, I have no interest. But when I need information, I go to the library. And what else? Oh, I'm just so curious as how this withdrawal from our, is going to improve our library. I'm ready, I'm ready, because I love the library, I use it all the time. I'm ready for it to be improved. I want to know how it's gonna be improved by our withdrawal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bogartis. Moving on now from informal comments, we have, first up is our new business. The NCACC Annual Conference. As voting delegate, we have to have one person to attend the conference. It is in Pitt County this year. And I've attended the last couple this year. See if anyone else would like to. It's the twenty-first, twenty-third. Pitt is on the other side of Raleigh, I believe. Turn of Michigan.
So, do you want one?
Everyone wants to check their schedules. I'll, I'll check with my wife.
Is that this month?
August, August twenty-first through twenty-third. It's usually a really nice event.
You can just let me know if anybody's interested, if not, no. It can, it can be anybody.
Moving on now to our inter-local agreement with the Board of Education.
You have time to look at the inter-local governmental agreement. This is basically an agreement for all the building projects that we're kind of involved with each other with. And so going through it, one of the, I guess, changes to this agreement over the past one is that we are going with a C-MAR, your construction manager at risk. And so we don't have to have an internal construction manager position. Before, we had to have an internal construction manager position. But since we're doing this route, we're kind of managing it on our own. And so that was the only difference between the previous agreement and this one. Pretty standard stuff. It's just protecting the school system and the county and sets the expectations and mid-sparks on, you know, the planning, the project management. Even goes into when we're gonna be giving reports and the timelines and all that stuff. So a lot of, a lot of given information. And it is, like I say, it's just a, pretty much an MOU between the school and the county on, on who's, who's doing what.
Is it in there also somewhere? Or how are we gonna handle this so that we make sure the whole project is completed before they move in?
Yeah, no, that, that's part of the contracts, so that'll be a separate thing. So right now, we're in a design phase, and all the school, the design phase is mostly with the school and the school board. And then they will turn what their, that expectation over to the county, and they're the one that makes sure it's done.
Multiple layers of oversight.
Yeah, and then once you get out of the plan, and we're gonna see the plans of the school.
Correct. Yeah, it's, it's going through the programming phase. Not only one that's kind of closest, like I say, Fairview at this point.
Yeah, okay.
Or no issues with that? Is there a motion to approve? Well, let's finish rules and procedure, and do it all in one time. Is that okay?
It's fine.
Moving on to rules and procedure.
So you had requested maybe a more in-depth rules and procedures policy. And so I put this before you at the work session earlier in the month. And I think the only, the only change was moving the meeting, the first meeting to six-thirty, and the work session at seven on the first meeting of the month. And then, of course, this meeting in the middle of the month is to six-thirty. That was the only change at that particular time. Is there any additional for you?
One that I, I called about was, you know, on public comment, letter D. The wording was kind of that we only were gonna have forty-five minutes of public comment. And I felt like that was not fair to public comments. So if we hit that forty-five minute mark, we can table public comments so that all of our county staff, we can finish our business, and then come back to public comment after that regular business has been conducted. So that was the one thing that I did add, that I'd hurt a lot of people kind of, you know, this is happening at the library board, we don't want it to happen here. So if you'll look at D, that's what it says. Or public comment may be moved after regular business has been conducted with majority vote of the board. Okay with that, or?
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on now to offer to purchase and contract. Actually.
And you should have a, I think it's a, yeah. So we did, we did go and look at two different properties that are adjacent to the fifty-six acres that we've identified for the middle school project. By acquiring these two additional properties, it will give us the ability to work with DOT and possibly make a frontage road that would come out on Old Culloway Road to mitigate some of the traffic concerns. And so with this, the one property is one point seven acres, and that's two, two hundred twenty-five thousand. The other is at three hundred fifty-five thousand, it does have a home, it's point five nine acres. And between those two properties, that would give us access back to Old Culloway Road for the middle school, so.
I guess they didn't budge off their price very much, huh?
They come off of it some, from their asking price, so. But that's kind of where we, we settled on that.
Fair value. I think that's a fair value. This is two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars to purchase two parcels on Old Culloway Road that are adjacent to our middle school property, that'll give us access to Old Culloway Road to help with ingress and egress and create almost like a frontage road so that buses are not turning right off into one oh seven. Just safety. It was kind of one of those areas where we, we, it's all we needed to really focus in on, so. The only other place would be, what's the name of the road that comes off of the property now?
Locust Creek?
Yeah, Locust Creek. So. Okay. With that, is there a motion to approve one and two? I will have to make an amendment, or a special statement for the offer to purchase. So if there's a motion to approve the Board of Education inter-local agreement and the rules and procedures?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And then, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? And then on the offer to purchase, in the motion, I need a motion to purchase and authorize the chairman to sign all documents associated with the purchase, so that I can sign those documents.
I moved.
Okay. And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Moving on now to tax collector and refund report, Ms. Simpson.
Good evening. Um, the current taxes collected for the month of June were a hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars. The delinquent taxes collected were fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars. The total collected for the month was a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred, fifty-six dollars and eighty-five cents. There are refunds of three hundred and twenty-four dollars and releases of twenty dollars and twenty-seven cents. And we ended the year with a tax collection rate of ninety-nine point one nine percent.
Amazing.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the tax collector and refund report as presented?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
None opposed? Moving on now to Order of Collections Resolution R twenty-five dash one eight.
So this is just an annual resolution that we have to adopt each year, just allowing my office to collect taxes for this fiscal year.
Any questions for Ms. Simpson? If not, I'll seek a motion for approval.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Hooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Chairman Lyson?
Yes.
And then, next up is Resolution R oh-nine dash two-six. Amend the Equalization Review Board.
So this, we discussed this at the, at the work session. Basically, there was just a lot of, some verbiage changes in the document. It also aligns it with the schedule for reassessment. And also puts the board members of the Board of Equalization Review on that same schedule. So, so the same people would be, you know, that are appointed now would be also during the revaluation process in four years.
Any questions for Mr. King? Not, I'll seek a motion for approval.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hooper?
Yes.
Chairman Lyson?
Yes. Moving on now to our equalization, Equalization Review Board members and their new appointments. If there are no objections, I'll seek a motion for approval.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
None opposed? And then moving on to our Health Board.
This was also an item on the agenda that we talked about. And it was to stage your order of, have to go by position. They, this is a letter from the Health Board asking for these folks to be approved for additional term.
Questions from the board? If not, I'll seek a motions for approval of these members.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Quick reminder now, our first meeting, our regular scheduled meeting will be August fifth. Um, quick reminder now, our first meeting, our regular scheduled meeting will be August fifth at six thirty. Just, uh, everyone please keep that in mind. It'll, we just changed this to six thirty. Um, and it'll be, it'll be advertised as such in the paper and on the board. Um, any questions from press tonight? We do have a, a need to go into closed session for legal and personnel. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
None opposed? We are in closed. Again, a reminder that our regularly scheduled meeting has now been, on August fifth, has now been moved to six thirty. All of our meetings, um, will begin at six thirty with our work session beginning at seven, uh, moving forward. So with no further business, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed?